Okay, it's seven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was like that for us.
All right, I'll lead us in tonight's opening prayer. Dear Lord, let us make decisions tonight for our city with a clear, open mind. And for everyone who has been traveling through the holidays, please have a safe holiday and return home to your loved ones. In your name we pray. All right, and you call the room?
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting and December fifteenth special meeting? Any of this council discussion on those minutes? Motion to adopt.
A move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. McNabb?
Yes.
Okay, auditor slash treasurer's report. If you would, sir. Mr. Sappington, if you're over here.
I'm gonna borrow a copy of the treasurer's. Oh, it was up here anyway. Uh, here's the treasurer's report, November twenty twenty-one. I'll first, good evening, council. Hopefully we had a great Christmas. Uh, you will see on the first page, account balances. Um, looks like some extra interest left behind on a, on a transfer from a CD, sixty-six cents that the treasurer will probably clean up here in the next month or two. Um, and then, uh, sweep account showing a large balance due to project-related funds, about a million of that was written on in a check a few days after this date. Uh, the next balance is just interest year-to-date, same message as the last year. Fed keeping interest rates low, so we're getting about one-twentieth the revenue from that source we used to. And then on, I guess this would be what, page three? Um, the treasurer's bank reconciliation, starting with what he sees in the bank postings as far as expenses, payroll deductions, and then deposits. Um, things like utility revenue income tax coming down to his bank balance at the bottom. As far as I can tell or remember. Uh, oh wait. Just looking for adjustments, I didn't get a chance to review this. So on the next page is book postings, expenses and revenues. And then what I was gonna say was my point was, um, no adjustments here. Um, here at the bottom, which is pretty good, meaning no missed postings. Coming to a difference between the bank and book balance of zero dollars. I think we're on a streak. We're gonna ten months straight with that, which is pretty good, pretty cool.
So that outstanding check for one-point-one million, that's a, a project?
Mm-hmm. Yep, does he have that down here?
Yes.
Well, yes, I see it down here. So, yep, a large portion of it was to Kirk Brothers, who's doing the sewer plant project, I think it's nine fifty-nine, they just cashed it, uh, Christmas Eve. And, um, the other was to engineering fees and some other costs for the project. So, he uses that, I think, for the next year, Scott, would you say, sewer plant project? I'm writing about a million-dollar check a month at this point.
It's a sixty-million-dollar project, so it's huge checks monthly.
Will it go through twenty-three, or twenty-two?
Estimated completion is December of twenty-three.
Okay. So, I doubted, but the estimated completion. So that's the treasurer's report, let me pull out my copy auditor's report. So this is the auditor's report, November twenty-twenty-one. Um, I, I haven't said before, the treasurer works Monday evenings, but his schedule may be changing soon. He always tells me, but I forget if I pass the message on to you guys, so he doesn't just skip, he just has a, a work schedule, okay. Um, so in November, revenues for the month, one-point-five-eight million at the top. Uh, if you want mine to go a little bit further, Scott, expenses of one-point-three-four-one. Um, and then I just note the much larger balance in October of both those numbers due to project-related expenses, mostly sewer. Um, some, if it's helpful to you guys, top expenses, payroll, um, projects, utilities, um, equipment, so on and so forth. Uh, total fund balances, three-point-five-two-four million, general fund at eight-point-one. Uh, all of these numbers are a little bit lower as today, as of today, you'll see in the December report, we've pushed out a lot of expenses and purchases in December. Um, so those other fund balances, eight-two-one, general fund, four-hundred-five-thousand, combined street funds, one-hundred-twelve capital, just creeping over a million for the water fund for the first time in a while. Um, over a million in the water fund, that's recovering from a balance of less than two-hundred-thousand in two thousand and sixteen or seventeen, I believe. Um, so that puts that at its healthy balance before loan payments on the first of January and sewer fund at just over half-a-million. So this very small chart you guys will probably have to pull up on your laptops at home. Um, it's just our cash report, all revenues in, all revenues out, our expenses out, and our final balances. Uh, one thing of note here, on November thirtieth, we had a hundred-sixty thousand in encumbrances, which is pretty high for us, that just means it's in the pipeline just because of this large amount of, uh, purchases and expenses we pushed out for the end of the year. I mentioned earlier. Uh, final few, quick notes, abatement letters have gone out, I said this last month, I just wanna mention it again. If you're signing up for the water loss abatement program, saves you money when you have a water leak, five-hundred dollars is covered on your water bill by a thousand. Um, they're due January tenth. So if you guys are getting them in, or if anybody at home, any of the nine watching at home? Um, I'm a numbers guy, okay? Uh, just get your abatement in, it's, uh, due soon, or call the office. Reminder to folks, new shut-off procedures going into effect on the first, utility shut-offs. Um, it will probably be, uh, an interesting transition, but it will limit shut-offs for most customers to a maximum of six times a year until twelve, saving them around quarter-fifty of fees. Hopefully that is a good program, we'll report back when that's done. Uh, the last thing I wanna talk about was, more on a personal note. Um, Chief Fitch's advice was what good is a resolution if it's not brought up when it's relevant, um, which I thought was good advice, um, considering uh, the impact of a resolution. I wanted to say, five years ago, today actually, council passed unanimously a resolution on suicide awareness after, um, the loss of, uh, my partner, uh, Jerry, a Nelsonville resident. So I just wanted to bring it up again and show the text, put the text in the report, talk about how suicide rates tend to increase in the winter. However, little-known fact, they tend to continue increasing through the spring because of the disruption to, um, routine. Uh, and are actually higher in the spring than winter. So, um, there have of course been many residents we've lost to suicide since then in Nelsonville. Um, and it in general encourages city departments, administration, council, as well as businesses, organizations in town, uh, to offer things like crisis management, um, and intervention, mental health services, inclusive health insurance offerings that offer mental health coverages. Um, and things like keeping the hotline posted for your employees. So, I don't know if any businesses took that to heart, but I'm sure they did, um, seeing as it's one of those pervert types of death. Uh, one of the top deaths of despair in Appalachia for several decades now. And, um, honestly, kind of, uh, I don't know what the word is. It's a, it's not, it's not a good way to die, and it's a bad for the community, so I think they can do something about it, I don't like to mention it, so. Appreciate you giving me that. That's it.
Okay, Taylor, any questions for Mr. Taylor?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, where are we putting vacant property registration fees?
In the general fund.
In the general fund? Okay.
Yes. Any more questions? I can give you a count tomorrow, if you'd like. Anyone else having questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sappington.
Thank you.
Motion to approve auditor's report, treasurer's report?
Second.
You go? Yes, Mr. Dunphy?
Yeah.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. McNabb?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Um, mayor's court don't have a report, but I can tell you this, assigned over eighty-eight warrants for arrest for unpaid fines. Ladies and gentlemen, I just say this, uh, just pay your fines. Um, that's all I have. Um,
Mr. Dunphy, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Sappington, another question?
Yeah.
Um, where do we land on the regional income tax authority? The gentleman came and presented to us as we're getting ready to go back into like tax season for income taxes. Did we move forward? I, I kinda can't remember, like, what happened there?
Uh, so it's been financed twice, I think, now, um, so it's certainly been up for discussion, you're right, the gentleman came and spoke on it at council. Um, I haven't gotten a motion to bring it, uh, to general counsel, um, for a vote, so we don't currently, we're not in a pipeline to transition. Um, if it helps, even if council acted, it's about a six-month, eight-month transition, so at this point, we'd be looking at, what would it be, twenty-three? Not twenty-two.
And then one other project, uh, the, uh, city, and I think this was you, just 'cause I think you were leading it, the codification process for the new code on the computer, where does that stand?
It is, the honest answer is they're working on it and it's delayed. Um, I, I, I feel like, we feel like broken record, or sound like broken records, it seems like everything in the world is delayed, the whole world's delayed, I feel like. But, um, one issue they ran into was, uh, just far more text, so they didn't literally go through and count the amount of chapters or codes or sentences or whatever, I mean, I'm sure they counted codes, but how he explained it to me, I don't really perfectly understand was, um, there just was a lot more to go through, review and redo, um, than they expected, and it's just taking more time.
Okay, we have a target completion date?
I should've asked for one, I don't think I got one.
No, it's, it's definitely frustrating, or, so we're just as frustrated on our end as well, but we are definitely on them. Uh, but hopefully by February, but hope is a horrible strategy.
Right.
I can ask them tomorrow, so I remind you.
Oh, I'd say, I do too.
It's terrible.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else having questions?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, have we done, are we, we're down to mayor's court once a month now?
Yes.
And we've had our ones?
We've had our ones.
Um, and it went pretty well?
It went very well, uh, a lot of people are starting to, there's a lot more people starting to show up. You know, due to our increased activity with our mayor's court clerk, she's, uh, calling people, sending letters, um.
Fitch has got stuff for you.
Yeah, Fitch has got a bunch of stuff for me, but yes, it has been, it is, there's a lot more activity over there, I've signed more papers in the last week than I have in a long time, so, um. Okay, anything else?
When's our next mayor's court then?
Mayor's court is the-
January eleventh.
January eleventh, yeah. It's Tuesday.
It's on Tuesdays now?
Yeah, it's on Tuesday after the first meeting. All right, uh, any citizens' comments out there tonight? Anybody got anything to comment? Okay. Any Tory business and organizational comments? Okay. Committee discussions, committee list will be out in just, it'll be tonight, you'll have it in your email, and then you can set your meetings accordingly. Uh, try to accommodate everyone with their wish and hope dream list. Um, so, uh, you'll have that tonight. And then, uh, so department update. We are to Mr. Fitch, Chief Fitch, you have the floor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hello, council. Um, one of the things I had made notes on is I wanted to remind everybody that you already touched on it, that we have went to one night a month, mayor's court, and that was first held in December. Uh, it has moved to Tuesday, but, uh, it's the first December after the standard meeting, a council on the following night, Tuesday, after. We had about forty percent attendance in this last month, which, uh, which was actually up a little bit. Um, that's not really acceptable to me, so we're trying to find some strategies to increase, um, our attendance of people. And the problem is, if you talk to people out on the street, I've talked to many people and have, uh, they know there's, there's not been a lot of repercussions in the past, and they just kind of dismiss it, even they admitted this. So I've been working with Jessica, uh, pretty closely, and, uh, we went back through and issued all the new warrants, and there was actually eighty-eight new warrants that we had Mr. Dunphy come and sign over the last couple of weeks, the mayor's court warrants. Um, we started the other day because we have limited space, obviously, and, and, uh, one of the new strategies is we went out and arrested seven people on the one morning, uh, three of them was transported to the regional jail, four of them posted bond on their fines. Um, we was able to bring in, uh, I think it was a little over eleven-hundred dollars, uh, for that morning. And hopefully it sends a message to people that we will hold you accountable for your fines in mayor's court. We will hold you accountable for failure to appear as a mayor's court. Um, there's also been well over a hundred letters that's been sent out to individuals that advising them that they've had fair to appear as, and/or there will be license blocks on their driver's license and be suspended if they're not already. We're getting more and more people coming in and starting to pay those, um, once they've, uh, received the letters, they could, not necessarily because they, they wanna pay their fine, more importantly, they don't wanna lose their license. So that, that's been an effective way, and again, we're just trying to hopefully increase attendance and let people understand that, you know, you do have a responsibility to appear in mayor's court. So I'm hoping to see attendance, uh, and people showing up for that increase over the next few months. Um, Friday, on Christmas Eve, we did a search warrant, a narcotic search warrant on Madison Street. Uh, we seized a little over twenty grams of heroin, twenty grams of fentanyl, about eight-thousand dollars in cash, and a guy loaded a firearm, handgun, to be more specific. Uh, there's multiple individuals, there's three individuals that's gonna be charged with multiple drug offenses out of that investigation. It's still pending right now, um, we're still following up on that. Also, to just update you, um, after meeting with the civil service commission, it's been determined that we're going to retest on the sergeants for the sergeant promotionary examination. Problem we're having is that, uh, the majority of the companies that sell these promotional tests is either very, very, very expensive or they are sold out. Uh, and don't, don't have any timeframe on when they will be coming in. So there are several options that's available to us that, uh, we're gonna discuss with the civil service board and try to get this done as soon as possible. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to get it done in January if I could. Uh, still having radios for equipment, radios and, uh, radars, um, it's still on backorder, but hopefully they come in in January or February. Um, just remind everybody that, uh, at midnight, New Year, when the New Year strikes, that we'll be patrolling book though. Um, I think you guys are ready for that, and, uh, you know, we're ready to take on that additional challenge. Uh, I think it should be relatively seamless, uh, there'll be a little adjustments for book the residents, I think, but I think it'll go relatively smooth. I don't anticipate any, any real issues with that. Uh, we have had, um, several break-ins and burglaries that's occurred here with some of the businesses in town over the past couple of weeks. And I'm pleased to report that we've, we've solved at least two of those and was able to recover some of the property as well as, um, be able to get charges on, criminal charges on people for the burglaries and or break-ins. Uh, so hopefully that, uh, hopefully that's, sends a message out to people, the guys on midnight are being vigilant, uh, trying to watch and make sure people aren't out there breaking into places all at night. Uh, and that's really all, that's really all I have as a general thing. I, I will have, the next meeting, once we compile our year-end stats, I'll have all the twenty-twenty-one year-end statistics as far as the rest. Uh, break that down to, uh, traffic offenses, uh, jail, all those kind of things, warrants served, that kind of thing. But I think it's, uh, it's gonna be, it's, it's, I definitely feel comfortable in saying, at least over the past ten to twelve years that I've found statistics, it will be significantly higher than any other year. Significant.
So how's all, how's the new cruisers course, those rotation and be assigned?
It's, it's actually really nice, uh, one thing that I've done, um, is I do a minimum, I, I've been doing, uh, random inspections on everybody's cruisers because, you know, the, Mr. Frank and, and you guys have all approved, uh, the, the, you know, us getting these cruisers, so I want them to last. Um, guys are, there's mandatory equipment now that they have to have in all the cruisers. There's mandatory inspections to keep the cruisers clean, interior and exterior, um, serviced, and make sure they stay serviced and all that. And we've got a, uh, a system that we're using that tracks all that, any money that's in them, so we can track the, when they, how much money we're putting in per car, but it's, the mileage on them is, is definitely decreased a lot, obviously, because you've got people just driving them, you know. Uh, it's been, it's been a huge benefit. Uh, when guys have court, we don't run short, you know, a guy comes to the office, he gets in his cruiser, he drives the court. Uh, so everyone's assigned their own individual cruiser, which I think provides a little ownership and pride to that vehicle, so guys are taking a little more care of it. Uh, they're, you know, they're not leaving things laying around, hitting water bottles, things like that. Uh, so I think it's been very beneficial. The only back, the only thing we don't have is still, because it's on backorder, is the radios and the radars, some of the cruisers just don't have radars. Um, and so hopefully that should be fixed in the near future.
Uh, Chief Fitch? Maybe it's backtracked a little, so you're saying that you're postponing the sergeant's exam? Or, or you're saying that you have to retest, like, did it happen?
Yes, it happened. And, uh, in discussion with the civil service board, um, there were some issues that they thought it would just be best to go ahead and retest, we didn't have, uh, the guys didn't do as well as what I think a lot of people had hoped. And, uh, they want, basically, it's gonna give them a little additional study time for the promotional examination and, uh, all the links and everything to the, uh, um, study guide material. We're not gonna provide it to them, but we're gonna, they're gonna have additional time to study the, uh, the, the links and stuff to recommend it for study.
Is there a minimum score that someone has to get on the exam in order to receive a promotion?
Yes, seventy percent is passing. Anything below seventy percent is, is failing, and anything above seventy percent is passing.
And then I know that you are, um, have been short an officer, and we approved you hiring a unnamed temporary fill-in. Where do we stand on filling that position permanently?
Um, that's gonna be a test, hopefully in the spring, once we get the promotional test done. Um, because, uh, hopefully we get that, I gotta range out with the civil service board, they're aware that we're gonna be testing. And, uh, once they can come up with some dates, they're gonna let me know, um, I've already spoken to them about that.
Aren't we limited to six months of a temporary appointment where they become a permanent employee?
Correct.
So how does that work in the timeline? Will this happen before that six months?
Yeah.
So when did the, that temporary appointment happen?
Um, it was in, I can't remember the exact date, it was in October.
Okay, so it'll need to happen by April?
Yeah, yeah, actually, we was discussing March, that was when our target was for the month of March, February or March, depending guess, uh, but I had other dates because they haven't given to me yet.
And this temporary officer you hired, um, is he still employed by Hocking College, or is he only employed by us?
No, he's only employed by us.
Any other questions for Chief Fitch?
Uh, Chief, congratulations on your big bust, uh, it sounds like it was a pretty productive one.
Um,
What street was that? Madison Street, you said?
Madison, yes.
That's a nice. So, can you give us more detail on that, or?
Uh, not really, because it's still pending and there still might be some additional one, really rather not, because, uh, we're still in our investigation and, uh, there's gonna be potential, some spin-off potential, search warrants, and they're, they've spread out and branched off into other drug and narcotic investigations. So I don't really wanna go into too much additional detail right now.
All right. Were you working with other agencies on those too, or?
No.
Nice.
Nope, just us.
Where we do search warrants by ourselves, uh.
Training you all. I mean, we, I mean, we work with the Athens Bay prosecutor's office, I mean, obviously, they review our affidavits for search warrants before we take them to the judge. So we work with them, but as far as the, the actual search warrants, that's us.
Nice.
All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate it, thank you. All right, and who else has a department update tonight?
Of code enforcement, which will be done by Sean Frank.
Good evening, everyone. This barber is out sick tonight, she's actually sick all last week, and she's still sick this week, so. Not doing well. So I'll just go through her code update, everybody got a printout in front of them. Uh, the numbers seem to correlate across the years, so I'll just start out at the top left and go through her tire program. Uh, less tires in twenty-one, so you can see nineteen that she collected, uh, two-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-five and twenty, she collected sixteen-hundred-and-fifty, and twenty-one was eight-hundred-ninety-two. Uh, so code enforcement cases in two thousand and nineteen, she had five-hundred-and-eighty-nine and twenty, she had four-hundred-and-sixty-eight and twenty-one, she had three-hundred-and-eighty-two. Uh, vacant properties, she, two thousand and nineteen, she had a hundred-and-thirty-two, and twenty-twenty, she had a hundred-and-six. And then twenty-twenty-one, that's a tentative number for now, but she's had eighty-four down and twenty-four registered for twenty-twenty-two. So that's still, uh, kind of a gray area, and she'd have to explain it better to you. Uh, rental registrations, in two thousand and nineteen, we had one-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty. And I'm not sure what's up with her numbers there, as far as the transition.
I'd say eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Yeah, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing.
So there would be eighteen was one-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty, nineteen would be one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eight-six, twenty would be one-thousand-seventy-two, twenty-one would be two, or nine-hundred-and-ninety-three. And, uh, so far, she has two-hundred-and-eighty-four for twenty-two, and they're still coming in every day. Land Bank Properties in two thousand and eighteen, um, she assisted with seven. And she doesn't have nineteen's numbers here, but in twenty, she had sixteen of them, and twenty-one, she has thirteen. Uh, Secure Properties were boarded up in two thousand and eighteen, she had two, two thousand and nineteen, she had eight. Twenty-twenty, she had twenty-one, and twenty-one, she had eleven. And, uh, the, the different landlords that she, uh, works with, in nineteen, she had a hundred-and-sixty-eight, and twenty, she had a hundred-and-forty-two. And twenty-one, she had a hundred-and-thirty-eight. And, uh, this is just, uh, a lot of the different numbers she's put together, just to try and show the spectrum, um, from one into the other. I can tell you that she's currently, she's got a couple of big, uh, bigger type cases that she's working on, she's trying to find, track down who the owners of, uh, three different houses she has on here, um, they're out-of-town owners, and she's in the process of getting them boarded up. Um, they'll probably end up being condemned, and, uh, there's nobody that lives in them, now they're vacant. But, uh, again, she's trying to figure out, get ahold of the owners to get more information on them before we, you know, take any further steps. So she's working on that. We've also appointed her as the prevailing wage, um, coordinator, so what that means with all the construction we have in town, once a month, she just takes a clipboard, runs around town and interviews everybody who's working on our different projects and, uh, has a series of questions. Basically, how much money do you make, or are you aware of, uh, this rule, this rule, this rule, and it doesn't take her any time at all, and, uh, she just keeps a stack of them. And, uh, that's it, very simple. And she was also very active before she got sick, and with the fire department and all the stuff that they were doing, with the Christmas basket program, the toy giveaway and so forth, so she's been very busy. And that is what Ms. Barber's been up to.
Are the contractors supplying her with the paper, with the prevailing wage, they're supposed to be recording prevailing wage reporting for her.
So we have, they, they give it to, uh, DLZ, so DLZ has them. So she's been going on the, so she's been the other side of it, the C, and then we basically provide DLZ with a copy, and Taylor has a copy to see if they match, they just do a random sampling, and then after that, we just throw them in the file, which has worked out pretty good, 'cause we've already had, uh, public records requests from attorneys wanting to see where we've actually gone out and done that, you know? And, uh, we just scan it in and send it to them.
So what do you attribute the, the fine and the enforcement numbers over the last three years?
Compliance? Would be my, that's how I see it, um.
Me too, I just, I'll check.
Yeah, that, that's how I see it, you know, she has a lot less, uh, little things now, and now it's more bigger stuff, more like science projects than anything else. So she's working on, for example, the house that she, the one house that she's working on now with the owner up in Columbus, it's rather mysterious, or mysterious how it's working out, because it was way behind on taxes up until two years ago. And then magically, somebody started paying the taxes, but the owner can't be found. And the house is abandoned, hasn't been taken care of or visited many, it's weird, so.
She's doing the Lord's work in this now, doing that stuff.
So.
Any other questions for code? Okay, all right. Moving on to second reading ordinances, ordinance 101-21.
An ordinance adopting temporary appropriations for 2022.
Questions? Counsel discussion. Motion to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, second reading for ordinance 102-21.
An ordinance mandating the 2021 appropriations ordinance to amend the appropriations at the close of business on December 31st, 2021 to match the actual expenditures and anticipated receipts through December 31st, 2021.
Counsel discussion on this matter?
Is this just an annual lineup?
Yeah, this is the original draft. I'll just add and admit the, the reality situation. This is a draft with the city juice for years. The auditors freaked out, so we bristled at it in 20, end of 2019, I think, in 2020. And wanted us to change up the language, which we did. And then, either would have been 19, actually, end of 19. And then they loosened up and said they actually kinda liked the first language better. So here it is. I know it's kind of, but it is basically to make sure that the books are cleaned and ready for year end, which is what my home week is.
All right, any more questions? Okay, motion to adopt. So move.
Okay. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 103-21. Need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing City Manager Scott Frank to accept and enter into contract for the electric vehicle charging stations and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is installing electrical vehicle charging stations. Whereas the city will be advertising to find a contractor for the installation job. Now, therefore be urinated by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City Manager Scott Frank is authorized to enter into a contract with selected contract installer of the electric vehicle charging stations pursuant to the bidding and advertising project, process. The bid and advertising process is attached as exhibit one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 731.30 because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary for the clean energy, tourism and timely installment, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Dual and enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the 27th day of December, 2021.
Okay, any counsel discussion on this matter?
Our split's still the same one, the money. Let's go.
Right, so they're putting it up, I actually was trying to pull up the bid. It closed out today at noon. We only had one bidder. It's the same one that gave us the preliminary bid. It's a total of 176,000. AEP is gonna be plenty of 150, so we'll have the 26,000. But I do believe, do we need it now? Do you need a appropriation?
No, I believe we included it in
Oh, that's right.
The new appropriations for next year.
Right, so I didn't know, um, do I actually need to say the name? It was EV United was the one he bid. Yeah, EV, like electric vehicles?
Okay.
United. And they were the only bidder and their bid was in fact I can't, but it was the original 176 and change. So this city's portion would be 26,000 and change whatever it is, less than 27,000.
How many stations is that?
So that'd be two, is it, I always get it backwards, is it class three or class one?
Ah, it's class three.
Class three stations, so that's the one that they can pull into and charge us within an hour. So their expected completion date is the end of January. This is the same company that we talked to before. The only reason we're even able to do it is, when we talked to them before, they ordered the equipment, not because of us, but just in general, they wanted to have some equipment in stock. And it just so happened that the equipment came in and they're able to sell it to us because they didn't have any other customers yet and we're able to meet the timeline. So dumb luck, okay for us. And then we're gonna put it in right next to the new house on Columbus Street, right in front of the brick building that Hocking College purchased from, that recently burned from, I believe it was Mr. Hartley. So there'll be two stations right there. I believe they have double ho, or double connections and they're long enough to reach across the car if it's on the passenger side, or rather driver's side.
Nice. Motion to second. Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2258. Need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
A resolution appointing the attorneys of Reminger Company LPA as special prosecutor to prosecute pending the removal proceeding as well as any due to reviews thereof of Councilmember Gregory Smith. Whereas the city council of the city of Nelsonville has provided notice of removal proceeding for Councilmember Gregory Smith. Whereas the city council of the city of Nelsonville has requested the county prosecutor to prosecute the removal proceedings of Gregory Smith. Whereas the county prosecutor has refused to accept responsibility of prosecuting the removal proceeding. And whereas the city council of the city of Nelsonville has appointed the attorneys of Reminger Company LPA to serve as special prosecutor for the removal proceeding. Now therefore, this city council of the city of Nelsonville has resolved that the city council of the city of Nelsonville hereby appoint pursuant to Nelsonville City Charter Section 11.08F, the attorneys of Reminger Company LPA to serve as special prosecutor over the removal proceedings of Gregory Smith. The city council of the city of Nelsonville hereby grants permission to the attorneys of Reminger Company LPA to prosecute the pending removal proceeding of Gregory Smith as well as any reviews thereof conducted by the court. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Dual and enacted by council on first reading this 27th day of December, 2021.
Any counsel discussion on this matter? Motion to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Kent, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you, Captain.
Okay, resolution 2259. Need someone to introduce it, please.
A resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.03B, requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by 0.5 mil renewal levy for recreation. Whereas Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.03B requires the city of Nelsonville to request the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by the renewal of the city's 0.5 mil recreation levy expiring in 2022 as a prerequisite for placing the issue on the ballot. It is resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the clerk of council shall certify a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor, requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify to the city of Nelsonville the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the renewal of a five-year 0.5 mil levy for recreation of Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19H, expiring in 2018. Replacement five-year levy will commence in 2022, first due in calendar year 2023. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law. Dual and resolved by council this 27th day of December, 2021.
Is that date right?
Yeah, is that date right? Expiring in 2018?
Nope. It is?
No. Isn't it expiring this?
22.
22, yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to correct that.
Yes.
I second that motion.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
All right. We are to resolution 20, oh, wait a minute, we gotta, I'm sorry, motion to adopt. So move, second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Same, same clerk lawyer here?
Yes. That's how we're doing it.
All right, resolution 2216. Need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
A resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.03B, requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by 0.5 mil replacement levy for recreation. Whereas Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.03B requires the city of Nelsonville to request the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by the replacement of the city's 0.5 mil recreation levy expiring in 2022 as a prerequisite for placing the issue on the ballot. It is resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the clerk of council shall certify a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor, requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify to the city of Nelsonville the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the replacement of a five-year 0.5 mil levy for recreation of Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.19H, expiring in 2022. The replacement five-year levy will commence in 2022, first due in calendar year 2023. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law. Dual and enacted by council the 27th day of December, 2021.
Counsel discussion on this matter? Motion to adopt. Second.
Could I just add that, when I spoke with County, I spoke with County Auditor Thompson last week, she said the replacement would come in lower. I mean, it's good practice to ask for them. But just to give you guys a heads up, she said the renewal, for some, it's a little backwards than usual, replacement's usually higher. But because of the weird property market right now, the renewal will be in our best interest. Just to give you heads up.
All right, motion to adopt. Got your hat back?
Yep.
All right.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we are off to number 14. That would be the city manager's report. Mr. Frank, what was yours?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with some clarification. As everyone knows, there was an article put in Athens Messenger, this past Friday, with the Friday before, that created a lot, or put out a lot of false information. It said that we hired, we, me, that I hired a police officer without council approval. That's 100% inaccurate, false statement. So I have a 90-second blurb here from a previous council meeting that I would like to play, just to clear the record.
Oh, I haven't written it.
Make sure everybody gets.
An ordinance authorizing promotion of one officer to sergeant and authorizing the hiring of a conditional provisional officer. Whereas the staffing in the police department needs to be modified, whereas the police department needs to hire a conditional provisional officer on an emergency basis. Now therefore be urinated by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager Scott Frank shall be granted the authority to promote one officer to sergeant, provisional sergeant. The city manager Scott Frank shall be granted the authority to hire a conditional provisional officer immediately. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 731.30 because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary, so that changes that and kind of allows for the Nelsonville police departments to perform their everyday duties in an effective manner. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Dual and enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the 9th day of August, 2021.
Counsel discussion on this matter?
I just wanna make sure everybody understands that this is two different actions. One is to promote for sergeant and then the other one is as soon as we find someone to bring on provisionally to fill, fill in where we're at. So it's two different actions. And make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah, probably at the next meeting, bring in the staffing orders to change the staffing.
I guess, so will I be able to spell it out, what the staffing will be? Do I need to do that before hiring somebody?
No, no. You have, you have the person there, you have the position open, but I think we took the sergeant's position out of staffing. That's what you said. So we need to get the sta, sergeant staffing back, sergeant position back in. We actually had that conversation if your number was chief about that, that he wasn't ready yet, so.
Appreciate it.
All right, I'll let you get your list.
Oh.
So move. Thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
No way.
Yes.
You mean that was, was that viewpoint wasn't true?
So.
Well, just, let me just say this, to clarify the question that I was asked when the messenger called me, I believe they called you also, was that if, is his name Cecil Walder?
Morrison.
Morrison, I'm sorry. Cecil Morrison, if his name was brought up before council, that was the question I was asked.
And you have more, you have more than one email with his name on it?
Not that I'm aware of, but you know, I've been very busy. And if, if that happened, but, and I said to her, I said, I could have missed it. I even said I missed the meeting. Maybe it happened then. I said, I don't know. That was, that's what I said.
So this has created a significant amount of undue, unnecessary drama on the city side. That's fine. False story, poor reporting, whatever, clarified it there. Also, the council member who's not here tonight continues to go on about this, so, and then continues to go on about provisional, provisional means. So I took it upon myself after hearing from his, his attorney, that the Blacks Law is the authoritative source for all legal matters. And I looked up what provisional means and it says temporary, preliminary, tentative, taken or done by way of precaution. So yes, we have hired Mr. Morrison temporarily. That council member, or really any council member, can take action and change any of that at any point. So Mr. Smith is more than welcome to come and change any of that. And instead of running, because what happened is, he took the time sheets. And so he came into the water office, raised his voice at the water office personnel. Auditor Sappington's sitting here in the room, can verify that. And he got the time sheets. And he took the time sheets because he was looking for that name and he ran to the messenger with him. He didn't come to me and try and discuss it. He didn't go to any view and try and discuss it, no. He ran straight to the media to create chaos. When he had the authority as a council person to come here and take care of it. Clearly not on Team Nelsonville, rather just creating a spectacle is what he does and turning council Clearly not on Team Nelsonville, rather just creating a spectacle is what he does, and turning council against council is also what he does. And it, again, created unnecessary work, especially when we have FEMA to worry about right now. Instead, we've been answering many questions about police officer stuff that really is just taking up time. Um, you know, I, there's a lot of other things that go along with it. Um, you know, he, uh, he asked, he doesn't understand what my problem with him is, you know, um, I openly admit my disease, I'm not going to do it tonight, you all know what it is, and you know, he's taken it upon himself to spread that around to people that I went to church with as a child, and they've come to me and shared it with me, along with other things, you know, and he wonders what my problem is, and I'm telling other lies that are just frankly just made up. And, um, you know what? That's a council person. He's the only one of you that hasn't signed the codic, uh, code of conduct. You know, and it's personal attacks. He is using city res, he's trying to use city resources as a game. He is trying to report code offenses on other council members in here, trying to tattle on it one another to use and tying up resources. Now, I will tell you, Becky doesn't have the time to go out and look for doors stood up against the house right now with the other stuff she's doing right at this moment. She will get to it, but she's not looking at it just yet. But I can tell you, I drove past the house where his wife lives in town, and there is a, uh, what is those green turtle lids for a sandbox laying in the backyard? It's been there for years. There's branches off trees laying in the back that have been there for well over a year. A year ago, he hired someone, a year and a half ago, rather, he hired someone to clean up his backyard, and I stopped him from dumping the, uh, debris from his yard in our back property. And he said they had permission, the gentleman did, that was dumping it. Constant problem, and very distracting, and I felt if I didn't bring it to council's attention, along with all this other distraction, there would never be a remedy for it. So I appreciate you listening to me, and that's all I have to say on that matter. Um, good. The other things I have to talk to you folks about is the, um, memo I sent you regarding Mill Street and a couple other construction projects. I would like to speak to you in executive session about it. It is, uh, for now, I don't have official word yet to make public. Once we have that, then, uh, we'll definitely make that one public, because right now it's too preliminary.
Need a motion for executive session? Hold on a second, okay.
Okay. I have a question. Are you done?
Sure.
So I was just wondering, um, I don't think we ever got a city pool file report, revenue and expenses, to see how we did for the year on that. Did we get that at the next council meeting?
Sure.
I, I just, I know that it's something that we had talked about, and we know that it was going to be done, but I think it's as we move forward about, about, um, because we'll want to do this sooner than later, establishing rates for next summer, looking at staffing levels that are needed, et cetera, that it would be nice to have that final.
The final funds. Believe it or not, I think we wrote the last check for a pool bill today
I know it takes forever.
to savings. So nothing savings did wrong. It's just the way the invoices come, they sometimes come way later.
Oh yeah, it was seventeen dollars for pay.
Yep, yep, so we'll have the pool report, even the seventeen dollars.
Okay, so, um, I have a letter here I need to read, uh, it's from the city of Nelsonville. Dear Mr. Greg Smith, pursuant to section eleven dash oh eight E of the Nelsonville City Charter, please allow this correspondent to serve notice that considering your demand for a public hearing, the removal proceedings are hereby continued till January twelfth at six thirty PM Eastern Standard Time in the city council, in the city council of the city of Nelsonville Chambers, located at two eleven Lake Hook Drive, Nelsonville, Ohio, four five seven six four. The substance of this removal proceeding remains unchanged from your notice of probable cause. Cerily, uh, Tony Dumpy, city council president, and Corey Taylor, charging official. And that is that. Also, um, all right, motion to go in executive session.
So move, second. Note the time.
Who are you inviting? Writing in the, uh, city manager and the city law director.
Two seven fifty-four.
Shall we?
Prepending.
We could probably just move them out.
Or move, how about that thing? Would you dare for us to go?
What's that?
Unless we've done the move, important.
Yeah.
Is our turn to move the screen on?
Yeah, impending litigation, right? Prepending litigation, yes.
All right, motion to come out of executive session.
So moved, second. Note the time.
Time is eight sixteen.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Joan?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Boo?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Great. Have a nice evening, Ms. Joan.
Thank you, sorry.
You're fine.
Motion to move. Okay, we have a motion, uh,
Is there anything good to the order?
Uh, let's do the good to the order, because, um, we skipped it. We were kind of clustered there, the manager's report. All right, so, uh, good to the order. Mr. Taylor?
Um, so what I have for good to the order is, um, it, it was mentioned a little bit briefly in, uh, Scott Frank's, uh, sitting end report about Mr. Smith. Uh, he is coming after, uh, myself as a property owner for code complaints. Uh, I did a public record request of his, uh, code complaints, uh, in the last twelve months. Um, ironically, there's only two. Um, one for myself and a fellow council member, uh, here as well. So I think, I think it's just a retaliatory effort, again, trying to bog down the city, uh, and, and by the way, they were not huge violations, uh, like I did get the doors removed from the property. Uh, and the other house, to be honest, was not even my house that he took a picture of and was complaining about. It was a neighbor's house. So I can't, I can't say anything about that, can't speak for that, but that's, I just, I think that it's, uh, you know, again, I know people are concerned about these proceedings and where we continue to do it, but the reality is, he's not for the benefit of this community. Um, and he'll look to, you know, just be divisive as much as possible, so I'm sure of that. And he doesn't, and he doesn't look there.
Mr. Clement?
Um, just everyone have a safe New Year's Eve.
Thank you.
And hopefully, twenty twenty-two is going to do better.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Sherman?
Uh, just, everybody have a safe New Years, and careful out there, and. So I have.
Mr. Booth?
Thank you. I just, uh, same sentiments as Mr. Clement, Mr. Sherman. Everyone has a great New Year, uh, I hope everyone stays safe, safe precautions. Yeah, we've had, uh, yes, tragedy, it's hit, pushed all year of late because of current situation of the world, and we want everybody to be here, so take measures to protect yourselves and your, your loved ones.
Thank you, sir. Um, this week, uh, see, today, last week, um, I have an uncle, uh, die of, of COVID-related issues. Uh, fifty-seven years old. Uh, he was like my big brother, or kind of like a second father. Um, and so it's kind of been, uh, a little bit of a mess. I appreciate everyone's, uh, out worrying stuff for me, um. But, uh, the one thing, you know, you can take away from it is this COVID is real. It's not real until it hits home. And it hit home pretty hard, so, um, with that, I wish everyone to have a safe, uh, New Years. If you need a ride, and you here, I will gladly come and get you.
I nominate Justin Booth as the chauffeur. He can drive my dump truck with the ant horn.
So I get to honk your horn.
That's Dylan, be honking, okay. So with that, uh, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved, second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Boo?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.